Good evening, everybody. May you come to order? I've got my special mallet here in case anybody gets out of order at this point. First order of business is public comment. Anybody who wants to make a statement, raise your hand. I'll recognize you, your name and your address, podium, three minutes, please, sir.
John Tappan, 187 Steppenstones Road. I would recently discuss the town hall with a person who knows more about it, its history, than I do. And I repeated a statement that I've made to several other people, that the people who built our town hall 170 years ago constructed something that outlasted them and their children and probably all their grandchildren. The person I was talking to pointed out that the puzzle was that the town had never secured adequate land to go with the town hall. That lack of land at town center has been a problem for at least two generations. 1950, the firehouse was built on land donated by the Lee Church. 1962, this was repeated with the schoolhouse turned into a library. For more than 10 years, committee after committee has struggled with the lack of town-owned land at the historical center, and with good reason. The survey parcel is 1.42 acres, but 23% of that is water, 26% is in a wetland setback, and after the wetland setback, 27% is in the front or side setback, leaving less than 25%, only 35 hundredths of an acre to build on. The town recently made an offer to purchase land from the Lee Church Congregational. The church responded with a counteroffer to sell 5.4 acres with over 300 feet of frontage. This offer did come at a price, $175,000, and the house there would have to be moved or torn down. The price seemed high to me until I calculated the opportunity. Even without using the backland and the utility right away, or the land to the north of that, this would increase the buildable land to more than seven times what we have today. This may not be a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, it may be a once-in-170-year opportunity. If the town owned this land 10 years ago, would we have gone through so many committees? I don't know. Maybe the timing is a good thing. Some of the previous plans have been more expensive than that presently under consideration, and the recent direction has been towards solutions that are more in line with the town's history or frugality. The opportunity to add almost five and a half acres to the town center land should not be lost for the next generation. I don't know whether the town of Long ago ever had the opportunity to secure adequate land to go with the town hall, but I do know that if we did not take advantage of this opportunity to purchase the 5.4 acres, then the next generation will know the time and the place of our failure.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
David Makers, 203 Wasland Boulevard. I just want to second what John has said, and I'd like to make two points. I'm newly, I've only been here 40 years. Because where I live, I've really gotten interested in the history of it, and that should give me, as John says, a longer timeframe. And I really think that we should be planning the town with the idea that we're planning for the future, not to save money immediately, or not to pick the cheapest alternative. I think when you look at the long-term view and you think of the town as having, being split up between, apart from, cramped, the library, the historical society, the old town hall, cramped on those, as John says, less than a half an acre. Compare that with having the expanded area where you could have a real town center with the town hall, with the library, with the existing town hall as meeting rooms, the history of the town. Compare that with having it all split up and cramped. I think it is really something we should not ignore, and I think, and the second point I'd like to make, is that I think it's too important for the future of the town for the selectmen alone to make the decision. I feel that it calls for leadership, and I think it is leadership required to lead the town into having a longer-term philosophy, a longer-term horizon for planning. And I call upon you folks to exercise that kind of leadership, and it would certainly call for a vote and a warrant article, much more important to my mind, warrant article than the preceding one that dealt with the manisture property. So I thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much. Further public comments at this time?
Dandy Miller, 15 Sherburne Road. I've only been here 30 years, so, very nice. My concern is when I heard that they were, that you guys were not going to take this opportunity and eliminate one of the options that are open, at the price which I think is probably a very fair price, considering the land. And to not take it and lose that opportunity of the land that is right next door there to keep open all our options while we decide what to do is really poor management, as far as I can see. If we lose that and they decide to sell it to somebody else, and it could go very easily, it's certainly a buildable piece of land, and I just think that it is not good judgment to let this go right now. I would like you to reconsider that.
Thank you.
Paul Kazowski, 46 Lamprey Lane, since we're into years, 32 years, and hopefully I'm This is about the property and about the town center, and I have several observations. From a project point of view, oftentimes I've heard that we're going to provide safety and safe workplaces for places for our employees and for our citizens. I would like to add, we are interested in providing safe and comfortable places for our employees and citizens. I think there's a critical difference here. We are trying to build out a town center, not just the town hall. And there are two options on the table, five and 2D. 2D was the preferred option. It's my preferred option, although my heart is back on the brick of property still, but I've compromised, I've come a ways, maybe more distance than some others have come. So 2D, for 2D to be viable, we need the church property, preferably all of it, but enough of a chunk of it for it to be viable. If you consider 2D not viable for whatever reason, maybe a failure in negotiating, maybe a severe calendar date that is closing in on us, and we have to make some decisions, whatever reason, we're left with five. If we're left with five, then the remaining town center, quote-unquote, what we're trying to call town center property, is seriously inadequate for everybody's purposes. So the repurposed town hall would become a meeting space community center, the most creative drawing that John Tappan has come up with, and he's done yeoman's work on this thing, I think has maybe 45 parking spaces if we're lucky. But it's difficult to expand a library in that setting. It's questionable as to what's going to happen to some of the buildings, and in a lot of respects, it's hard to tell whether the cart is before the horse sometimes. So, you know, I think there's one option on the table, I think it's 2D. And if it's not going to be 2D, then it's going to be five with the purchase of the church property. End of statement.
Thank you. Any other public comments, please?
I apologize, I'm a little late, so I hope I'm not repeating, but I do agree with everything that everyone said. And my notes were basically that the master plan is a plan for today and for the future, and that the, you know, it's my understanding that the select board will carry out the master plan as they ratified it in the, you know, in the last year, and that is through 2026, and that we need to plan for anything that would be in that period and into the future. So I am also a proponent of taking advantage of this large piece of property that was unforeseen, you know, three months ago. Had it been on the table, this clearly would have been the recommendation of the facilities committee. It just seems, you know, we spend thousands of dollars, hundreds of thousands of dollars trying to buy land to preserve land, and now we have an opportunity at an unbelievably good price to give us almost five, or five-plus acres of land for which we can expand. And for me, the, one of the major points also is that we would be in control of what we, the character of the buildings that we would put, I can only imagine, being sandwiched between what is on the west side of the town hall, and now to have someone come in and purchase that property and do the same. Our entire, the town center would be ruined, and it would be based on this vote, which was taken privately, and I also echo that I think this should be brought up as a warrant article, it should be put forth in front of the people, because I do think that this would pass. It's an opportunity that we just can't let go. And the last point that I would make is that, and I'm not sure how rigorously this is being adhered to, but the idea was, after the facilities committee did put forth their recommendations, that this board agreed and said that they would adhere to that and, and basically have the new vision, the town visions committee carry that out, and that Stevensfield would only be used as a fallback plan. This isn't a fallback. You made a decision to vote it down. It's a perfectly viable possibility, so you're really not adhering to what you agreed to at the end of August when we put forth that recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comments, please?
Ann Tappan, 187 Steppenstones Road. Pursuing purchase of the church property preserves options for the future of the town. A larger parcel is not a mandate for the location of the town hall, though the facilities committee and most of the citizens attending public information meetings did recommend the Lee Town Hall, not the town center. I urge the board to resume discussion with the church to pursue the larger parcel option. This option will not come around again. Gentlemen, please, do your homework, inform the citizens, and give the voters a voice. This land purchase would give options to the town now and into the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, please.
Patricia Black Gill was well wrote, and I just wanted to say that I agreed, basically, to add my voice to these, I've been speaking in favor of it. For the past year, I've come to a lot of town center committees as a spectator, and sometimes I participate, and I heard over and over again that we ought to let the town decide. You know, we can't, I mean, we all have said this and agreed with this, and so I just feel as though we, as we did with the brick of property, and I'm not speaking if it's a good deal or a bad deal, or what acreage, but I really feel that this is something that should go to the town. It concerns the town, and it seems like, you know, I know you're going to be talking about it more tonight, but maybe we'll find out a little bit more about your thinking, which would be nice. But do you think, you know, you should let the decision go with the town? Oh, con, Pam, by the way. I will admit to have been here more than 60, but I've gone ahead, so.
Thank you very much. Further comments?
Chuck Cox, 36 Captain Smith, Emerson Road. I guess I can speak for myself and three other members of our family as residents here. If we want dates, I've been here almost 40 years, and we've owned some land here for 50 years, so we do go back in ways. We really like the town and very involved with this, very active with the committees and work for land protection and whatnot. I was really disturbed when I heard that the town had refused to buy this land. I've been on a number of the, well, the library committee and town center committee and whatnot, and it always came down to, if we just had that land there, it opened up everything. And it came up, and then it disappeared, and I'm appalled. Yeah, I don't think that's the way to run a town, but I think there's been a lot of energy put into the studies and the best options, and it looks like we've thrown the baby out with the bathwater. Maybe some people want to work Stevensfield, think that's better, and if we don't have the land, we're going to end up at Stevensfield. We do that, we lose one of the recreation sites in town, which I think has been used quite a bit, and I think we, this is one of the things in the planning thing that needs to be done. And I think that we're, we need to be more open to this. The price certainly seems very reasonable from what, the little I know, and I understand that the selectmen never even did a site walk, which seems not correct. At least you should be walking and see what's involved. And just turning things off without dismissing it, without really studying, it maybe won't work, but that's what you should be going for, is working for the town, for the best interest of the town, and listening to the town people, which I think you're hearing here. I don't know who, if anyone here is going to speak, but I think most of the people here is here because of this, this action that, so I hope that you will reconsider, that we have something of the town warrant to see if we can purchase this land and do things properly.
Thank you. Further comments?
Thank you for using the microphones. I forgot my hearing aid, that's why I'm like this, but so far I've been able to hear everything. Thank you all. I also want to say something about my position on the Lamprey River Advisory Committee, which as you all know, has had some government money to spend on land protection, and our main method of protecting has been easements. And I can't remember specific, I was chairman of that subcommittee for a while, the Land Protection Committee, and I can't remember all of the times that the town of Lee came to us, or we came to the town of Lee and said, "We want to help with that," and put our money, a lot of our money, into saving land for the town of Lee. And we've done that with other towns as well, but the town of Lee seemed to be especially important. Everybody was quite cooperative with the idea of saving land, and that the town needed to save land for recreation, for trails, for, one of my pets, which is to have a great place for our employees to work, because ever since I've been involved with the energy committee, I've had tremendous help from the people in the office, and I hope it will continue, and I hope that they can have more comfortable quarters. The other thing I'd like to mention, all of you know that Dave and I, probably you know, that Dave and I won't be residents of the town probably after a year or two. We're planning to take our old bones down to Riverwoods and hope that they can make them last a little longer. But what will happen for me is that my heart will be here. It has been for 41 years, I think. And I just wanted to say that it's very important to me what happens to this town. So that's really all I can say, except to applaud everybody else at this point, and it seems to me, like, for five extra acres, or whatever that amount was, $175, $175,000, or $180, whatever it is, it's a damn good deal. So that's it.
Thank you very much. Further comments?
Are you accepting the comment that we received the email?
As long as the board will allow it.
I bought copies, if you want.
Do you allow it?
I'm perfectly fine with it.
Karen?
Sure.
All right, get out of town, it's very weird, please.
Here.
There's a copy for that.
From Patricia Jenkins, 9 Hardy Mill Road. After studying and considering the interests of the town of Lee both now and perhaps more importantly in the future, I would like to speak in favor of revisiting the Lee Church Congregational, offered to sell to Lee the piece of land between the church driveway and the present Lee Town Center land. There are several problems this would ease or solve, namely, at present, the church property wraps around in behind Lee buildings. Setback requirements for lot lines, state right-of-ways, and wetlands further reduce usable land. Lee Town Center buildings are crowded with little to no room to expand. Parking space is severely limited. These problems, coupled with a growing population, propose an increasing space problem. Adding the church land to the Lee land is a solution for now and long into the future. This opportunity is unlikely to come again. Now is the time to act. This is not a perfect solution. Acquiring the church property comes with short-term problems of its own. The church parsonage is included on the land. Lee does not need an additional house, especially one in unusable condition. However, there are avenues to explore with viable solutions for this issue. Having the additional land greatly outweighs what is involved in acquiring it. To conclude, I urge the board of selectmen to once again, with open mind, study the church offer. Thank you. We also received one from Janet Allen, 85 Tunnel Road. As a resident of Lee, member of the Lee Historical Society, and past member of the town center committee, I urge the board of selectmen to reconsider the latest offer from the church as regards buying the property, including the parish house adjacent to the town property. I understand that there are issues that will need to be resolved, but feel this is the best option for the present and future so that the town of Lee can move forward with this project.
Any other?
Those are the only two I saw.
Well, thank you, everybody, for your comments. It was well appreciated. We'll take it under advisement. Next order of business, Sergeant Valer Tane.
Hello all, my name's Sergeant Don Valery with the Lee Police Department. I'm excited to introduce our newest officer, Jason Ruggiero. He comes to us from Farmington PD. He's already got the academy under his belt, so we're pretty excited about having him go through our, probably about a month or two month long field training program, and he'll be ready to go on the zone. He's here with his wife and two young children along the back. Once again, we are excited that Jason is here with us, and we're eager to get him on the streets.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome.
Yes.
Welcome.
And welcome to your family, too.
Yes, absolutely.
Thanks, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You forgot one.
Bye.
Okay, item number four, Lou Brundin, the Energy Committee, solar panels and public safety complex. Please.
Lou Brundin, 14-hour lane, 28 years.
I can see we're going to have a conversation.
I understand that you have a positive, you might have a positive proposal. As it turns out, there's a new proposal. The old proposal was made in October. It was good for 30 days, and so now there's a new one. It's a, it's a very similar to the last one, and it just came out today, basically, so I'm going to pass it out to you. Not that we'll be able to go over all the details right now. And I'd also like to introduce Karen Canizaro from Revision Energy.
Also a Lee resident. 159 Wadley, all the way to the end of the years. Only 10, I don't care if you guys, but I do have a young child who ideally will be in this, district in this town for a long time, so. But I do also work with Revision Energy. I don't often make these meetings, but because I live in this town, I felt that I would try very hard to come up and help Lou a little bit. Just speak to this, the potential of what's called a power purchase agreement. And so just a quick overview would be that, you know, if you were, if it was a private entity and you were a business and you wanted to put a solar array on your roof or on the ground, you would be able to take advantage of a 30% tax credit and then a depreciation schedule, whereas towns, municipalities, libraries, nonprofits aren't able to do that. So what Revision Energy offers is a power purchase agreement wherein either Revision Energy would own, and that's kind of what has changed here, is Revision Energy has just rolled into 100% ESOP, a 100% employee-owned company, and so the rate schedule that we used to offer for standard PPAs, which is what this would fall under, just has changed because our tax appetite is different now, and I won't bore you with those details, but this is the updated PPA for a 59 kW system on the safety complex to offset a large portion of the electricity or the kilowatt-hours of the meter at this building. And so the power purchase agreement, essentially what's in it for you, and I, it did have slides, but it doesn't seem like this is the right place to do that, is that, so that either an investor or Revision Energy would own the array, and then the town of Lee would pay for the production from the array at, it's kind of a discounted rate, like currently you're paying 18, 19 cents to the utility company, and so you would be able to lock in at 10 cents according to this for the first two years with a 2% increase, and two years later with the option to buy out the array at a fair market value at, after year five. And so those are some of the details that are in this proposal, and I think Lou included the diagram, the correct diagram of the array that's proposed, where the panels would be on the more southern parts of the roof there. I think that's pretty.
I just, I just prepared a few other things. What I wanted to say, if you don't want to listen, you can read it. Just kind of points in favor of going with a solar array.
I think you're talking about the sort of the financial aspect that you actually...
I'm talking about the financial aspect, but basically what we're here for is to ask the board to allow us to develop a warrant article in favor of the town adopting the array proposal. And so it's, it's just like the beginning stages. I've spoken to a lot of, well, not a lot, I've spoken to three towns who've gone solar, Durham, Nottingham, Brentwood. We can get, we can get a lot of help with the warrant articles, because they've already done it, they've gone through votes with the town, and the towns that voted overwhelmingly to approve them. The first thing to consider is that the array is not going to require any upfront costs from the town, and they will get an immediate decrease in the rate for electricity that the array produces. So basically, there's no, there's no tax impact to the town. If the, if the town decides to buy the array in year five, then there might be a tax impact depending on how they finance it. Nottingham is going with a bond issue. Brentwood decided to set aside a certain amount of money every year so they can buy Brentwood decided to set aside a certain amount of money every year so they can buy their, they're, they're actually gonna buy their array after year six. So, I just want to go over some of the, some of the points.
Well, and just to, just to piggyback on that, just that part, is that if the town did not want to buy out the array, they can, could continue to pay at a reduced rate, the kilowatt-hour instead of, you know, to, to the, the investor of the array. I just wanted to point that out, that you can go, the contract is technically twenty-five years, that you could stay and just lock in to a reduced rate and, and choose not to buy out.
Yes.
Ideally, you do buy out because that's where the savings kind of begin, right?
Yeah. There's, there's a lot of information here and we, we could probably spend an hour or two.
That's the thing.
And so, it was hard to figure out, what do I put first? We pay very high rates, electric rates in New Hampshire, so it, it makes solar very competitive. The public safety complex roof is a south-facing roof and the angle is very good, so the production will be very high production.
And the production has to be good in order for us to offer a PPA because if, if the kilowatt per kilowatt-hour isn't good, then it, we wouldn't be offering it. But it's, it happens to be a decent pitch with a good orientation. So, not a bad installation and, and ideal production for, for the future, for forty years, really.
There's been a seventy-five percent decline in the cost of solar panels in the last ten years, which makes it a lot more affordable. I just want to say something about Revision. They, they're a great company. They've done over seven thousand installations in New England in the last, what, ten years?
Since two, two thousand, yeah.
Ten thousand and three?
Fourteen years.
Fourteen years. A lot of, a lot of large ones, including the gravel pit one, which is.
A six-hundred-and-fifty-one kilowatt system that offsets all of the town and Durham. But you guys probably know about that because I think they had to get approval for that. And that, and that's a PPA with a third-party investor.
So, Brentwood has a PPA. They have an array that's built, it started producing in October. Nottingham is going to be built next summer.
Yeah, it is, yeah, this, two thousand and eighteen, that's right.
This spring, so they have a purchase agreement and they're all set to go.
And that's a Revision, Revision Energy-owned power purchase agreement.
Durham has three other arrays. They have one on Churchill skating rink, which is a pretty large one.
Yeah.
Pretty large one.
And then the library.
The library and the police department, that's a smaller one.
Yep.
Charlie Forsy, some of you might know him, he's the coordinator. And he says that the arrays are all performing to Revision's estimates and up to specs with no maintenance problems. I think he said there were a couple at the beginning that were fixed right away by Revision. And I called the town, and I didn't even ask for the town administrator, but he called me and he was so enthusiastic about Revision. He said they're very dependable, the performance estimates were accurate, the work was done on time and on budget, and he gladly worked with them again. Brentwood and Nottingham, they, they passed their warrants overwhelmingly, overwhelmingly by the town. Nottingham apparently was over two-thirds. But we would like to get a warrant article so that it would pass with only fifty percent.
I think they, Nottingham had a town meeting, so I think it was a pretty heated debate, but then it did, it passed.
It did pass. If you look at page two. A lot of people, I just add, I just added this because a lot of people have questions about this. Solar panels require very little maintenance because there's no moving parts. I believe that Brentwood has a contract with Revision to check the wiring every year and, and things like that to make sure everything's working right. And it's, it's, the array is about two and a half times the size. And he said it would be like a thousand dollars a year. And that's after the buyout in year six.
That does take as long as it's owned by Revision, they are responsible for the maintenance.
That's after year six. And also, they're, they're gonna have a, an insurance policy, which is about eight hundred dollars a year. Again, it's two and a half times the size of this one, so I assume ours would be a little bit less. I just wrote a few highlights of the power purchase agreement. The array is going to have approximately a hundred and ninety-four solar panels. It's going to produce in the first year seventy-one thousand three hundred twenty-four kilowatts a year. The cost will be a hundred and thirty-six thousand five hundred thirty-seven dollars. Is that right?
Right, if you bought the, if that was a turnkey, that's what that gross cost of the project would be.
If you decided to buy yourself today. Maintenance, we talked about that. Financing, no upfront costs for Lee. Revision will finance it. The contract terms have changed from.
Twenty to twenty-five years.
Twenty to twenty-five.
With the option of early buyout in after year five. So, that's basically the owner of the array has taken the depreciation schedule for the five years. That's where that number comes from.
And just to review, if you are a homeowner, you could, you could write off thirty percent.
Yeah, thirty percent.
Thirty percent. Of course, the town can't do that because the town doesn't pay income tax. So, when Revision owns the array, they can get the thirty percent and reduce the overall cost, especially in the buyout. I do, I do want to mention that the array is, the reason for the size of the, of the array and the amount of kilowatts it puts out is a hundred and ninety-four solar panels is about the maximum number that you can fit on that roof that will produce efficiently. And so, and that'll, that'll produce seventy-one, seventy-one thousand or so in its first year. It's not quite enough to cover all the electricity needs.
For the building.
For the building. But the Energy Committee is in, is backing a project to change all the lighting to LEDs. And the LEDs apparently take half the power of these. And we're hoping to work on that soon and get that, get that going. So, after reducing.
Some of the load.
Some of the load, then, then the array will come a lot closer to producing the amount of power.
To offset, more closer to a hundred percent of the load.
And I was thinking maybe they could turn to the appendix. And that's, that's where the numbers really work, I think. And you could talk about that?
It's the appendix A, it breaks it down for forty years.
It's the last page, last page.
It sort of shows the cost of your, of the utility, your, per kilowatt-hour that you're paying now. And it just kind of breaks it down for the full forty years and shows the cumulative savings. You know, with the buyout or if you go full term. And so, those are, that's what those numbers are, just kind of shows you what the savings can be.
Yeah. The last figure on the page of savings, cumulative savings after forty years, four hundred and seventy-nine thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine dollars. That's if you take the buyout after five years.
Which shows the buyout in year, I think at the beginning of year six, it would be eighty-one thousand nine twenty-two.
And those are, those are the options that Nottingham and Brentwood would make. So, that's, if you have any questions?
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
So, the roof was never built for anything for structural support. How do you know there's enough structural support within the roof itself?
So, that's part of what the process would be. So, let's, if everybody, if it went to a warrant article and everyone voted in favor of it, then part of that process immediately would be that they would get a PE stamp. And so, an engineer would have to come out and structurally check it out. And that's, you know, it's all part of, it doesn't cost the town any money. It's just part of what we have to do along with pulling permits and filing interconnection and, and all of those things. So, that would, before anything moved forward, we'd have to get a stamp that it was okay to put those panels up there. It would be sad if it wasn't strong enough, since this is a fairly new building. It'd be a little sad. As a resident of Lee, I'd say, wow. Because if it's, you know, I'm sure it's beyond to code, right? Should be, it should be an updated code versus an older building like my seventeen-fifty-six house. It'd be a little different to put panels on.
And when you put panels up there, you know, I don't know how you structurally tie them in. Is people having problems with leakage or anything?
Nope.
No?
Nope, we use flashing and we work with the, and any solar company should be doing this anyway, working with the roof manufacturing company on the warranty that's already existing, existing on the roof. So that we can, so that you can, the town can still have that warranty on the roof. Yeah, we do it, we do it all the time, every day.
Questions in the board?
I have one. There's a point in time where the panels become ours. What's, what's the maintenance cost of the panels? What, what would we be looking at? I mean, do you offer maintenance contracts?
We do. Yes, we do. And also, it is a fixed array, so it's pretty low maintenance. In general, the only, the only thing that you'd be maintaining would be replacing the inverter, which has a warranty of like between twelve to fifteen years. And we actually in the cash flow show that, that we've allotted the money aside for you to plan that, for that replacement. But yes, at the same time, Revision Energy does offer a bunch of maintenance programs, which is what I think Lou alluded to in one of the towns after they buy it out, they're planning on including that. Our company is right in Brentwood, we're right down the road, so it's easy to come up here and maintain anything for that.
Can you walk me through in terms of months where we generate enough power? Do we sell it back? Do you sell it back and vice versa? In terms of when we generate not enough power, what's the cost for that? Is that still the ten or is it the utility rate?
Net metering rate. Well, so, so basically, so like, for example, right now, you're using electricity and if you had an array there, it's nighttime, so that wouldn't be producing anything. The days that you are producing and not use, and not using as much, that exports back to, because it's still grid-tied, so it exports back to the utility company. And then, in general, you would see that as a credit in the electric bill, sort of a net metering, you know, bucket. And the net metering rate, so the, no longer, since September first, they, through the PUC changed this, but you don't get full value for that, it's like a twenty percent. And we figured that in the cash flow. I think, do you pay about eighteen cents a kilowatt-hour? I think the net metering rate is, I want to say it was like eleven cents or something, but it's a, it's a calculated twenty percent off of the distribution charge. But the other, but to Lou's point, we're not bidding enough panels out there to offset a hundred percent of the load. And so, depending on, depending on where your demand, the spike is, where the usage is, you know, it may or may not, you may or may not net meter very much.
Is there any calculations you'd do if we were to buy it outright, like they want, we own it?
That's, yeah, that's that, that first, the hundred and thirty-six, five thirty-seven.
But in terms of calculating how much we'd save on electricity through the years? Is that, is that something that you can do for us or?
We can, yeah, if you bought it, if you bought it outright.
I'm just thinking, comparison? I'm just thinking of if anybody asks any questions, well, what if you bought it? How much would we save over X number of years, whether we're using forty?
Yeah.
How much would that be?
Yeah. You don't get the income tax right off.
Yeah, you wouldn't get the, that's, yeah, you understand.
I understand that, but I don't know how much.
Be high, I would.
Yeah, it would be interesting to know.
Yeah, I can, I can map that out in the cash flow to show the difference.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, it's quite interesting, what I'd like to do at this point is have the town administrator maybe contact the other department heads and obviously people that work in this building. They'd like to know what's going on. And obviously, this should go back through the Energy Committee, especially when you get that new piece of information as well.
Okay, yeah.
We do appreciate the fact, if we go forward with this, that, that you help us write up the warrant.
Yeah, we have, I, we have a bunch, because I'm working with probably seven, seven different places that are trying to get on the warrant article for this, for this march. So, that's easy at this point.
I think right now, we're using a hundred and twenty thousand kilowatt-hours a year here?
Yeah, I, I look at it, yeah.
I have it on my load profile.
It looked like a hundred and fifteen for the last.
I think if the LED lighting goes, that would reduce the power here a lot. Because it seems like that's the biggest part in this building.
Yes.
Right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have number five, Transfer Station Manager, open and closed containers. I'm trying to make it easy, convenient, clear. I'm going to put a requested in a couple of containers for the transfer station. Take the closed container for start, that's the compact one. And it's starting to break at the bottom of the seams from the main support. So, I'm recommending to get rid of that as soon as we can because it'll take a lot of time and effort, manpower, to do what needed to do repairs. And plus, we don't want it to burst at any time. If it bursts next week or it bursts five or six months down the road, there's no telling. And plus, it leaks a lot of stuff. And you can see on the closed container that the, the number is pretty well stable at nine thousand. The last one, about ninety-one hundred. We usually deal with Atlantic recycle equipment because they're, they're pretty good on things because they're the ones that pretty much built our compacters. So, they know the recommendations for what we need. And that's for the, the closed container. Now, the open container is one of the older ones. And we use that for the construction debris. And when we replace this one here, we're thinking about doing, taking this container, restructure a little bit and use it as metals. So, we could actually accumulate more metals. We do that, we accumulate more revenue. So, we're looking at that. So, we have two containers bringing in revenue instead of one. So, that's what we're looking at to do with that other container. And if we go with the, the closed container, we do whatever that one, I could end up probably getting rid of that and selling that to probably another town that has the time to do, take the time and do the repairs and so forth to make it right. But, you know, just requesting, if you do, if you do both, that's okay. But if you do prefer one, or rather, if you could prefer the, the closed container, because that's more critical on the containers.
So, you've given us an option, what's your?
Given the option.
What's your recommendation?
Recommendation is to go through Atlantic Recycle, to go through them and get a closed container for forty-five yard and it'd be done.
Nine thousand dollars? Is it nine?
Nine. That's nine for that. And if we gone with the same type of unit that we have now, that'll be well up over ten thousand plus.
Go with a single closed?
Well, what's the information about the second one? Because you, your proposal two, right?
Yeah, that's proposal two, the open container and the closed container. The difference is the closed is the compact one, the open ones are back. And we just drop C and D, construction debris in the back and into it.
And what's, what company were the open?
And that's the same one, Atlantic Recycling. And they're about sixty-five hundred, I believe. Yeah, I got it right here, sixty-five hundred. And the other one, the, the other company is like seventy-one hundred and sixty-five hundred. And Atlantic Recycling, sixty-five fifty.
So, Atlantic recycling for both?
Yeah, for both. And the, the timeframe for both of them are like four to six weeks out. Two, two months the most. So, if you want to do one, you can do one, or we could do both at the same time. It's whatever you like to do.
Probably should do two at this point.
I, I would think we would do two in this case, I don't know.
Yeah. Make sure I get this correct, gentlemen. I moved to grant the transfer station manager permission to enter our contract with the Atlantic recycle equipment for sixty-five hundred dollars for the open container and nine thousand dollars for the closed container.
Six thousand five fifty.
Six thousand five fifty, thank you.
Thank you.
Good. Questions? Paul and Viva?
Aye.
All right, I'll just, carry a second. Also, while you're here, you had, I saw an announcement that the recycling center is closed, right? closed, right?
Yes, actually, we're, the swap shop will be closed during the winter time, because I did, I talked to a bunch of the volunteers, and some of the volunteers can make it, some can't during the winter time, and a lot of people don't stop by, and it's, it takes a lot of effort and manpower to keep it clean, to keep it going in the morning during the winter time. And plus, all the articles and stuff are outside. So, we have no place in the room inside to do it, and plus, there's hardly any heat out here for them too, so they're really having a hard time staffing it. So I talked to the person, Shirley is the one, she coordinates it, so I say, well, why don't we just get them all together and we'll talk about it and give the reason why we should, and then, and it's good enough reason, and so, we're looking at. And it also gives a good transition, like you use, the volunteers are willing to help out, do what we need to do in the bulky building to get it prepped and cleaned and ready to go for heaters. I got heaters in already, so we're moving forward on that stuff, and, and we'll go from there, advise a little time to get a good transition in, so, and clean up back there, and I could disconnect the power for the, for 18 to get rid of those, right off the bat in here in a couple of weeks, so.
Thanks for the update.
Yeah.
Thank you. Item number six, the ABC for four-year, 19 budget for recommendations. Anybody going to speak to that?
No, we could, I think Toby should do it. Not Toby. We just tend to, well, Toby could come and speak to it, but, so we can have some time to speak to it, or we can just talk about it ourselves. I think Alice would like to come and speak to us maybe at the next meeting.
Okay.
Which is the fellow caring. But, whatever the board's pleasure is, so.
I would like, I'd like Alice to come and talk to us. I think that would probably be the best thing at this point, we can have a whole discussion at that time.
Okay.
Well, she said she had some comments she wanted to make anyway, right?
Yeah, about that, that the committee wants to make, so.
Yeah. And then at that time, we'll have the full discussion by the board.
Okay.
Okay, let's go. Thank you. Paul, you're off the hook?
Thank you.
He was, he was the only other member here.
Whatever I need to do would be fine, yeah. That works great.
Okay, we'll see you the next time then. Item number seven, Selectman Buckbee, he's going to talk about the Lee Church congregational property.
After our last meeting, oh, pass them down, pass them down, pass them down. After the last meeting, the board wanted to reject the church's offer, and I think I concur with some of the people that spoke in terms of, even if we build on Stevensfield, we still need some more space at the town center. So, John Tappan was nice enough to do a little tweaking on his, his survey that he's done, and this particular idea allows them to have the proper frontage and also setbacks, so that they could keep the parsonage where it is and give us some space. I had a conversation with them as a citizen, I told them three times, Karen said, yes you did, you told them three times. So, I was not representing you. I came and had a conversation with them, it was a very nice conversation with Bill Dupont and Jim Banks. Cleared up some misconceptions on both sides, in terms of where people were coming from, and they thought that they would take this particular idea back to the church, and they thought they could make it fly, in terms of getting support for it. So I'm not sure, it's in their hands at the moment, in terms of what was said this evening. I'm not sure if the original counterproposal from them is still on the table or not. I'm not sure, I'm not a lawyer, but we offered, they rejected, they counter-offered, we rejected. I don't think there's an offer on the table at the moment. That doesn't mean we can resurrect it, but I just wanted the board to be aware of what I did on.
I appreciate it. The camera offer was the one that included the parsonage, is that right? So we, and I think that's where, I want to say this, that's where I started having a problem, this with the parsonage. The parsonage. I think, from what I hear, one is in bad shape, two, when you ask, well, what can we do with the parsonage? Well, it could be, could be torn down. Tearing it down brings up issues for me, because we just looked at town hall and we find that we have a bunch of lead-based paint in town hall on the outside. It makes me ask, we also think we might have a mold problem in town hall. It also makes me think whether there might be any asbestos running around either one of the old buildings, either in, either in chingles, either somewhere embedded where they've gone in and redone insulation or whatever. Those three things create environmental hazards, and when you're tearing down a building with environmental hazards, the price of tearing down and disposing of the material goes up significantly. So, since some people feel I don't do my due diligence, I want to do due diligence on, on the building to see what is it, what is it that's in the building, and is it as easy to take apart and sell the boards and do this, et cetera? Or are we going to run into an environmental problem in terms of how we dispose of the building itself? And that's where we are. I have no problem with the land, I have a problem with not knowing the, the cost of the parsonage. That's, that's, that's the only thing that, that bothers me out of this whole thing.
So on this new, new drawing at this point, it just basically would provide enough opportunity for the, the town hall to be closed over there?
Yeah, well, it gives you more space, because right, right now, you have just about no space at all. With that little, it looks like a house, in terms of the shape that, that the town center sits on. So it would require the piece that sits between us and the magistrate building, that little dog leg that comes over?
Yes.
It gives you space out here. Part of it is a utility easement, part of it is a cemetery, but the part that's between the cemetery and Mass Road is significant. It's not the whole thing, the thing, the 5.46 acres, it's 3.76 acres, but it does cut the parsonage out of the, the part that we would be acquiring. But it gives us options, I think that's the biggest thing. And if anything, I appreciate the time that the church people had in conversing, they kind of understood where we were coming from, or I was coming from, excuse me, and I understood where they were coming from. And one of the things that I didn't know was kind of a pithy for me is that, when they offered that counterproposal, they fully aware that they knew the town was going to take the parsonage down and get rid of it. They never had any conception that we would renovate it or do anything with it, they thought we'd take it down, which was interesting. I never even thought that that would be something they would think about.
Can I just speak to the timing? Because obviously, we're getting to be very close to when all of this has to be pulled together. So the first public budget hearing is January 2nd. We have a second public budget hearing scheduled for the 16th. Any appropriations have to be revealed during a public hearing. And for anyone, because I know a lot of people have been asking recently, so I'll just say it now, the deadline for petition or an article that do not include a bond is January 9th. It involves a bond, it's January 5th, as long as January 5th is the Friday before January 9th, which I think is. So just wanted to make sure that the board's aware now, if the board decided to purchase a property, it has to go to a warrant, obviously, so this would all have to be pulled together, essentially, maybe six years.
So legally, legally at this time though, there's nothing under title?
That's my understanding, current.
All right, I'll take your comment. John?
John Tappan, 187 Stepinstones Road. At least some of the companies that I found online that do demolition work in New Hampshire in this area, provide free estimates, and they handle lead paint, asbestos, mold, hazardous materials, and that's all part of the estimate, that's the service that you're paying them for.
Understand, but the price is different depending on what they find, that's all I was saying.
Correct, so you don't owe the price until you ask them to inspect the building and tell you what it costs. But once you do that, you have a price.
Right.
One's in Epping.
David Meeker, why the cultural, I just want to second what John said, but the point is that that cost again should be known by the, by the church in assessing, that's part of the bargaining process. And I would like to make another point, is that I personally have served on, I think, two if not three different committees discussing these issues, and I really think that those, at least the last committee, should be involved in these discussions. I mean, this is what we spent over a year on, and it's not something that should be, the committee should not just be ignored and done in, in the, by the selectmen, and that's my opinion. So I would ask that certainly get an estimate on this demolition, and use that in your negotiations with the, with the town, and I would speak strongly to bring in some of the townspeople who've worked on these issues. Thank you.
The thing we could do, like the board's meeting, I don't mind having a conversation with the church and see if they will allow us to tour the parsonage, and invite somebody from Environment Vantage who's in Epping, or somebody else, come in and give us an estimate, just to see how much that is. That's one possibility. I would like to bring, if we did that, I would like to bring Karen and Bill along as well, and make their opinions, because they do that kind of stuff. Not for hazardous waste removal, but just in terms of the opinion of the building, but it's a possibility. We can go with something like what John drawn up here, and just not even deal with the lock with the parsonage on it, we could do that. But I think the important thing is if we're interested in doing something, start the conversation with the church. The church understands our commitments in terms of when more articles need to be in, so that council knows that. So I know they're working on something, I don't know exactly what it is, I'm not privy to that. Because it's in their best interest, because they have issues, financial issues, and they need to address those, and I think this would assist them as well, as the town, and maybe next year at this time, maybe they solve their issues and town's that luck.
Well, I understand the, obviously, all the public comment makes a lot of sense at this time. Obviously, the more land we can acquire, the better off we are, especially usable land, and it's, it's hard to get all over land, so that's always been an interest of mine as well. What I'd like to be able to say is that probably at this time is that we will open it up to the committee a little bit more, let them become more involved. I've seen a lot of passion here, I fear the throat and the passion of what's going on, and I hope that passion sustains it, just under voice for this public hearing. I'm looking at you, Dave.
But he's only been here 48.
I know, it's short.
41.
I've been here 37, so I'm running your back.
There's no doubt that it's a difficult problem to sell to the town, but I think that we, we deserve, we deserve it to the future citizens, to make a real effort, to make, to get us a viable and potentially beautiful town center.
So I'd like to be able to have Scott work with, with the committee at this point, right, and see if we can move forward and see if we can get this inspections going, if the church allows to go on property and look at the building itself. And then, we'll work with the town administrator, because we know we have to get this on a warrant somewhere at this point.
Do I have the board's permission to talk to the church and to approach them about investigating the building and see where they're at in terms of, because I'm not sure, the, the initial counterproposal, I don't know if they think that's still on the table or not. I don't know if the board's interested in that particular proposal or this, or, or both.
I would like to expect both. Okay, and I'd like to have the opinion of the committee, whether to go for the full amount or go for this portion of them.
And which committee are you talking about? The Facilities Committee or the Town Center Vision?
Town Center Vision Committee.
Okay.
But I'd really like to get the inspection done as quickly as possible, I want to know the price of the town hall.
Oh, the price of, I mean, the cost.
And I don't, just speaking to people in terms of, that building is an 1873 building, and I don't think, at least the people I've talked to, I don't think you're going to get a backlash in terms of, we need to save it, we need to keep it where it is and renovate it. So I think everybody's looking around. It'd be nice if it was moved someplace, but I don't know what the condition is, it doesn't sound like it's very good inside, so.
Okay, I think we'll move in that general direction. Okay. We'll go through, check there.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you for your passion and enthusiasm.
Thank you for your concern.
I got a feeling you're going to walk out, right?
Yeah.
I'm going to hand you my sleep, mate.
It's better.
Good luck, keep the passion. Excited? Truly glad.
Mr. Stevens wanted to be able to be here tonight, so I'm going to talk to the surplus truck bid. As you know, we put a bid package together and advertised it, and we've seen a number of bids, seven in total. We have the highest coming from John Frenel Jr. in Nottingham for $4,500. So it would be the recommendation of the highway supervisor. It would be the recommendation of the highway supervisor to take the high bid.
I agree.
All right, therefore, I move to authorize town administrator to sell the town of Lee's 1985 international dump truck to John D. Frenel Jr. at a price of $4,500. Further discussion? Paul O'Favor?
Aye.
All right, most encouraged.
In the previous meeting, we talked about the Town Center Vision Committee might have some expenses, and where we might draw that money from. Select Board actually has a supplies budget, has $500 in it. Other than that, I guess I would recommend that you take it out of contingency account.
Do you have any thoughts on what you're waiting?
I've been requested by the committee to request at this time $200, just to get us started. That's not going to be all of our expenses, but that's what they requested at this particular time.
I would suggest we increase that amount, instead of having them go back to us. I don't know how much you're going to get for $200, as far as, go ahead.
Oh, that's just the start.
I understand, but the start is X, X amount of posters or whatever, I just think, why don't you just, just get an amount that we can agree to, that you can draw down on when you, when you need to do something, rather than waste another, wait to get to a meeting or whatever, just give it a budget.
Just give it a budget.
So just take it out of the supply, the select board supply?
Well, if we do a mailing, that's like $900 right there, so.
How much do you think of contingency?
Well, we started with $20,000, we spent a little bit of it, so, when you approve, $3,000. So $17,000.
So there's no reason why we can't start at this point around $2,000, say up to $2,000?
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
They'll be very giddy.
Okay, giddy.
Well, they'll hit $2,000. Well, they only asked for $200.
Well, the committee with $2,000. Well, if I, all the passion and rhetoric I heard tonight, we want to give them something to work worth now to move forward.
Okay. Well, we're having the meeting tomorrow night with the division heads, like division heads, department heads, so hopefully we can get some good input from that.
Correct.
But we're thinking about specifically, possibly a mailing, some meetings, transfer station, in terms of posters and stuff, and just briefly talking to people and handing things out, trying to get the Boy Scouts involved, and there are a couple of other things that we were talking about, but the biggest one is the mailing. Mailings are expensive, so that's one of the things we're looking at, but that would be probably the most expensive thing. We also talked about, one of our members is making a contact at high school to see if one of the students or multiple of the students would do a little documentary, in terms of interviewing people at the town, in terms of the condition of the building and the proposal and stuff. Those are the things we're thinking about.
Okay, sounds like a plan, sounds like a good plan.
Thank you.
Julie?
And just a reminder that we will be having our annual holiday lunch with Treasure Room tomorrow from 12 to...
And where are you going?
On this, on this holiday.
We're not gonna track him down.
We'll have to let that one go, I guess.
Just remember, we only got so much money to bail you out. Just be aware of that.
Wednesday, I'm gonna be on Wednesday. I don't have those restrictions.
That's what we see.
All right.
And that's all I have. Just that, and then again, a reminder, obviously, town hall will be closed next Monday for the Christmas holiday. Oh, and I won't be on vacation that week, I think.
Is there anything you'd like to consent agenda before I move on? Therefore, I move to accept the consent agenda is presented.
I see.
Discussion? All in favor? Please say aye. Right.
We haven't been talking about this.
We have one.
I don't know. I think we should. Who works? That's, no, this is the thing that you sent down. Oh, this is. We absolutely need to. Maybe on the meeting on the second, or if we have time?
Why not? You know this is my heart, so.
Well, that's why I.
Yeah, absolutely.
Can we put, talking about the CIP as linkage to the master plan on the meeting on the second, January sixth?
Just my signature on this one?
Uh, yes. Sorry.
Okay.
Which one? Oh, the other one? Uh, he's not, I don't know. I spoke to him today.
Oh, did you?
Yeah. He's not coming to the meeting tomorrow. He's good. Yeah.
Mr. Brown?
Yeah. Give me that present back.
What, what I do?
My name's spelled wrong.
I don't do it.
Oh, my goodness. I'm sorry, it's a bit out of the life of heart. Did you hear what he said?
It's not under my control.
Okay. Whose control is it under?
Well, actually, that form came from Randy. I need to physically go.
Oh, for Randy? He's in his Christmas meeting, dating me too.
Oh, yeah. This spell, this letter, P U G, oh, my God.
I was like, do we wanna know how it was spelled wrong?
This is what I have to put up with.
With a name like Murdoch, you should see the variation.
Variation.
I'm sure. My father has had over the years.
One of these is Telgan, one is Scott Damon, and one is, I mean, just gives the board to that.
Is there another one you think?
Those are the PAFs, the P ARs, or PA something?
No.
Oh. Don't we get those for the new police personnel?
No, we just tried those, it's showing.
We don't ask questions. More of us beers? Or it's a second thought? Or any others?
Actually, yes. So I think late on Friday, maybe, we received, um, from Mr. Jeffrey, the gentleman who wants to be on the TCVC, his application. So assuming the board is going to approve that, we have the documents to sign.
I make a motion to approve Richard Jeffrey to be appointed to the Council of Vision Committee?
Aye. All those in favor? Please say aye.
No discussion?
No.
No discussion? In favor? I'm in favor.
Since you brought it up, I think there was any discussion.
Yeah, he's been attending the meetings already, but as a guest.
You all set? Item ten, we move to enter the non-public session, big H R C ninety-one dash eight comma three one one, personnel issues.
Aye.
Discussion? All those in favor?
No.
Hold on.
Mr. Buckbee?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Of course, yes. Motion carries, thank you very much.
I would leave that out here, 'cause it might be this.
Town administrator, what do you think so? Missalani has unfinished business. Please.
Here is the, pass those down. Tabulations from the training session voting that took place. So we've got two people that want building collaboration, improving volunteerism, and the rest of the people want goal setting, action planning, and time management. So I would suggest that we do the latter.
Goal setting, action planning?
So I'm not sure if we want to pursue this at the moment and see if we can set up a time, or if you wanna hold for a little bit, but that was the, the voting on.
I would say when the enthusiasm is now, let's strike.
So maybe sometime in January?
Yeah.
Whenever the town administrator feels it's a, a good time to do it. I'll leave it up to her.
Uh, yeah, it's during the day, I'm assuming, you mean?
Yes.
So how about, do you wanna start with the department heads, or you want me to start with the trainer?
No, we should find out with Susan.
Okay, so I will ask Susan to give us three dates in January, maybe? During the day? Nine to noon, worked out good? Okay? So I will request that and get back to the group, and then you can ask the department heads which one meets their needs.
You normally provide lunch, right? There we go.
As long as there's cookies, right?
Long as there's lunch.
Long as there's lunch. If you do it before the twenty-third.
Uh, what's the?
Well, that's when university starts up again.
Oh. So you want me to try for the first three weeks?
Well, when classes start up.
Oh. Oh.
I have a little more freedom now.
Okay.
One, one day holiday in January, remember that?
So Martin Luther, before the twenty-third, okay?
And not the fifteenth.
And what is it?
Not the fifteenth.
What's the fifteenth?
Martin the fifteenth.
Oh, okay. All right, well, she's not gonna do a holiday anyway, so. Any days of the week better than, I don't remember what you heard from the department. Tuesdays good, is that?
I think Tuesdays seem to be a good day.
Okay, Monday's always terrible.
Okay. So I'll ask her for some Tuesdays. Okay? Sounds good?
David? Karen? Anything else, Scott? Gupta, Joe?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.